At 7:09 PM, and state that the notice of the regular city council meeting was duly posted. We will have the pledge of allegiance by Boy Scout troop 140.
Call your attention. Call your advance. Will you turn me the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call your guard, post the call. Call your guard, attend to post.
We will move on to public comments. The first person I have is Tom Simon. Let me remind you that you have three minutes. Please state your name and address, and the council is not able to respond.
My name's Tom Simon. I live at 4111 Harbor Point Drive. I've come and spoke before the council before, and I just want to make a comment about what I witnessed. The first time I spoke, I watched Mayor Ford do something that I think was quite incredible. She asked for an RFQ, and for those that don't know, that's a request for quote, and it was on a lighting project. And I watched that proper procedure hadn't been performed, and you kept on and on in your questioning until you got the right, an answer. And I think that that shows an amazing amount of integrity on your part. And because I've been up here to speak about Brightwater, there's a real issue and a real problem that I don't think should wait. The fire station is blocked at certain times during the day, and I've talked to the fire chief, Mr. Campbell, about it, and I don't know if y'all are aware of it or not. I only became aware of the situation because of the Brightwater development that they're trying to put in. And so, I mean, I've got pictures, I've got photos. If y'all would please look into that, I would very much appreciate it.
Thank you. You can leave anything you need to with the city secretary.
I took videos also. Y'all have my phone over.
Okay. Thank you. The remainder of the public comments are signed up for agenda item 7A2, so when we get to that item, I will call the citizens up to speak. Now we will move on to city manager announcements.
Mayor, I try my best to be very brief. I know we have a long evening ahead of us. I hope everyone had a relaxing Labor Day weekend. As most of you know, September is National Hurricane Preparedness Month. This month is the peak of the hurricane season, and Tropical Storm Ferdinand has formed in the Gulf. Our staff is monitoring the system. The theme for this month is Prepare, Not Scared, and we encourage all of our residents to be prepared in case of what, the weather comes our way. For hurricane preparedness tips, we encourage our community to go to missourycityready.com, as well as go to our website, missourycitytx.gov. We have a large amount of great information and preparedness tips in light of what may come our way. A friendly reminder that both the Fort Bend ISD, as well as the Houston ISD, have started their new school year, so we ask that everyone please pay extra attention when driving and allow for a longer commute during that time. Some upcoming events, we have our car seat safety check, which will be Thursday, September 5th, our farmer's market on Saturday, September 7th, our senior casino trip on Tuesday, September 10th, and then our Oktoberfest on Saturday, September 21st. We encourage our community, please visit our website to learn what's going on, but more important, how you can be engaged with what we're doing here in Missouri City. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Consent agenda 6A, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. 7A1?
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of a 14.11 acre tract of land from SD Suburban District to LC3 Retail District, describing said 14.11 acre tract of land, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
All right, Jennifer.
All right. Good evening. This is just a request for a straight rezoning. The subject site is outlined in black on the aerial map that's on the screen. It is south of Walmart at Vicksburg in Highway 6, to the east of, to the east of it is a Fire Auto Zone, Firestone location in the Kroger Shopping Center that's right there at the Fort Bend Parkway. And the applicant is requesting to rezone this property from Suburban District, which is the classification that land is assigned when it's annexed into the city. They are seeking to change that classification and zone it to LC3, which is regional commercial and consistent with the other commercial development in that surrounding area. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Planning and zoning forward's a positive recommendation.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
There's a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Jennifer.
One signed up for this, this item, so...
Jennifer, was this proposed to be a recreation-type center before? Like a laser tag or something of that sort?
Not specifically. The owner has floated around some plans to do some kind of recreational. This wouldn't lock that use in. They would have the ability to do certain recreational uses, but anything permitted, pretty much what you see along Highway 6, regional commercial retail uses would also be permitted.
And would there be an entrance on Highway 6, or are they going to use that little cut out there?
So I'll defer to engineering. That detail hasn't been identified because we don't have a land plan that's under consideration yet, but there is an expectation to provide some access off of Highway 6.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. Agenda item 7A2?
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, granting a specific use permit, authorizing the use of a 14.98 acre tract of land in the city of Missouri City as a specific use, places of assembly, providing limitations, restrictions, and conditions on such specific use, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
In regards to the applicant is requesting to, to utilize the SUP for a place of assembly. It is located north of East Hampton Circle, south of Fondren Park, residential subdivision, and east of Cathy Avenue, and west of Fondren Road. In regards to the applicant, they did submit, as you can see on the screen, a site plan demonstrating a 20-foot thousand worship edifice, as well as a multipurpose media building, 16,000 square feet. The planning and zoning commission did send forth a positive recommendation with stipulations that were outlined as to place the trash receptacle in a more appropriate location, not near the residences, to landscape the detention area, and to make buffering mitigations for noises and other concerns as expressed with a solid screening. Staff also moves forward with a positive recommendation, and also they have a development schedule that was outlined for Phase 1 with the multipurpose building with an occupancy of 500 people to be constructed in 18 months, and Phase 2 will be the worship center with an occupancy of 1,000 people, which will set, which is set to start five years after Phase 1 is completed. They did state that they would comply with all rules and regulations, and the applicant is here.
Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm Mike Amashon.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor to open the public hearing? We have several applicants that have signed up. I will start with Alan Sofa. Please state your name and address when you come to the podium.
My name is Alan Sofa. I live at 11734 North Nottingham Circle, Houston, Texas, 7701, 77071. I stand in opposition to this megachurch for several reasons. First of all, it is unnecessary. I have researched, there are at least three other churches nearby on Fannin. One of them, a lady that I know that has, who's a barber, who says it is, goal is to build it larger. It is already becoming somewhat what one would call a megachurch, several stories, and it's going to get larger. I see no need for another one, and it's not encroaching on a residential area. The one proposed here does, with the increases, it also will replace a area that is set up for the potential of retail establishments, which we have very few of. There is no entertainment center, grocery store, movie theater, or any of the like within five miles of the subdivision of any great size, and this will make sure we won't, this will be about the last of the areas that we will have to develop, anything like this. And I think it's a lot of lack of thinking by the church. Most large churches stay away from residential areas. I know in my own religion, the ones I think of that are megas, like Beth Israel on North Brave Wood, does not encroach on residential areas. Nor does Manuel accross from Rice University, or congregation Beth Israel on Beechnut. They made sure of it. This one did not, and it encroaches on an area that is badly needed for retail and other related things. Also, I just don't think that he has given any reason for placing one there. And I dare say that I haven't seen any running situation that shows me that any member of council and mayor favors any sort of megachurch near where they live, where any of them live. I don't know of any, and I hear of no movement for them. So why should we be blessed with something like that? And that's, that's my, my point also, because I have not seen, we have sent a petition around that, and we have received no counter petition that have said they want one. And I guess that's about my three minutes, I think. Is it not?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Sabarowski?
Bruce Sabarowski, 7915 Chancel Drive, Houston, Texas. I'm against this also. One of the reasons why I'm against it is, will the church get tax-exempt status? Will they not have to pay taxes on that property there? Is just the church par-tax exempt, or is the whole tract tax exempt? I've lived in Missouri City for 37 years, and we have a mud district that's severely underfunded because the city refuses to even have city water and sewer. That extra tax base could help lower the tax burden for the people of Fond Meadow because that section is in southwest mud number one. Harris County appraisal doubled the value of that property from last year to this year, so the property is valued at like $1,300,000. How much of that would they not have to pay property tax on because they're a church? Some sort of light retail or light industrial would be better because it would add tax base to Fond Meadow. Fond Meadow hardly has any commercial development to offset its ridiculous mud that Missouri City refused to do anything about for the last 30 years. So we have a patchwork of 31-plus mud districts. One needs extra revenue just to survive, and now you're proposing a megachurch? I'd like to know how much of that land would be tax-exempt. Thank you.
Cheryl Orloff?
Would Jeanette Guy come together?
Yes, you can come together. She signed up, yes.
Cheryl Orloff, 11802 South Perry Avenue, Fondren Park subdivision.
Jeanette Quimby, 11814 South Willow Dell Circle, Fondren Park subdivision.
We are here, of course, in a protest of this megachurch being built. We, as homeowners of Fondren Park, do not want this. We want our green space. We want our green space left alone, period. We do not want additional traffic. If you only have 252 parking spaces and you expect 1,000 people, where are they going to park? Not on my street, because I'll block it off. The lighting would create problems in people's yards that are attached to this location. The noise level from this church would be horrible. The flooding with their retention pond, where's it going to flow when it overflows? Out into the street, which will cause additional flooding. The smell of the garbage, the large dumpsters would cause problems to these homeowners that sit next to this. There's also 65 trains per Union Pacific that travel on the two tracks right by the property every day. That's a big noise level for them also. Why would they want to build a church next to that many trains coming through? I have here for you 176 residents who have signed the petition to not vote for this church to be installed or to be built. The flooding is our main concern, the traffic flow. You, we would demand at the time, if anything is built on East Hampton, that East Hampton would have to be shut down, and South Cathy would have to be shut down. We have enough traffic coming in our subdivision with races up and down Gregory, McLean all day long and all night long. We're tired of it. Stop dumping on Fondren Park.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. You can talk.
Sorry. As mentioned earlier, was the tax rate. That, that piece of property is zoned to build homes on. Just prior to this meeting, you were talking about the increased tax rate of a penny. Compare the rate of taxing the lower, lower tax rate on a church compared to a few built 100 homes on that property. That's a small estimate of what could be built as a residential property there, which is what it's zoned for, as well as a small commercial district as well. You're looking at a tax rate of how much compared to the other, and you want to raise my property taxes and build a church? I have a problem with that when you could have been gaining the money off of that $1.3 million that it's currently assessed at. My other concern is, is that, again, with the parking, 500 now, 1,000 in five years, that's 1,500 people attending a church, even two bodies per car, four bodies per car. That is over 300-plus cars that are going to be needing to park. They do not have the space unless they take away their retention pond to build more parking. My last thing is, is to, is in general regarding our little subdivision, as well as Fond Meadow. We're now built in an island away from Missouri City. We are blocked on one side by Beltway 8, which you take your life into your hands when you exit our neighborhood to get onto that feeder road. On the south part of our neighborhood, we have now built warehouses, which have a lower tax rate, but we have warehouses in an industrial district. You go a little further, they've already cleared the property for more storage and warehouses. You then exit onto Fondren. We're going into the city of Houston, which right now, the safety of going into that area and what's surrounding us is not very good. But I truly feel that this city views Fond Meadow and Fondren Park as a little island. The, the care that you have for our residents seems that every time that you build a warehouse or a church, you've blocked us off. We're away from this city even more every time you allow a warehouse. I love churches. The gentleman mentioned the Jewish temples that are near us. You have Bethel Ministries right off of Fondren, which has a huge ministry support and outreach for the residents of southwest Houston in our area to help them during crisis, during hurricanes, during need. They're there. Down Hillcroft, you have Faith Ministries, I think it's Faith, that's right there just before you get to Beltway 8. We do have large churches in our area that can support the needs of the community of Houston and Missouri City in this quadrant. But all I ask is that, please don't block us off anymore. Build homes there. Get your property taxes to support the muds, to support the water district, to support your lights. Building a church, I believe in God, and I know we need churches, and we need outreach to people, but I drive now, leaving my neighborhood, looking at land, and thinking, there's a good place for a church. There's nothing else around. There's a big, open space. You can build on your church. This space does not allow for that type of growth. So, again, there's a lot of land in Missouri City, there's a lot of land in Houston, there are other places that would be much better for a growing church and a growing ministry than to barricade yourself by a railroad track in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Peever?
I know that several of you know me. I'm going to follow right on what they're saying. From the plans that I've seen, they plan on putting a retention pond that's going to be right behind my house. Now, I went over and took pictures yesterday of the retention ponds they have behind Best Buy, and that's right there at Main or Highway 90 and the Beltway, and is bounded by Cravens. That retention pond is full. Nowhere for the water to go until more water comes in, and then as the water rises, it goes down the drains. There is no chlorine, there's no way to keep insects out, so if they build this up, they're going to put mosquitoes in my backyard, they're going to put snakes, they're going to put rats, other vermin. This morning, I already have live-catch traps out in my yard, and this morning, and the police department can tell you, they came and picked up a possum that I had already live-catched out of the woods behind my house. If they cut all those woods down, where are all these animals going to go? The woods across Hampton have been cut down. Now you're at Fondren. I catch raccoons, I catch possum, I catch rats, and the Missouri City Animal Control comes and hauls them all off. That's good. Take them over to Buffalo Run, drop them off at the park over there. I don't need to have this retention pond in my backyard that's going to increase mosquitoes because it's going to come into my backyard. It's going to increase traffic. The only way to get into their property is off of Fondren. There's no way that they can put a driveway coming off of Main across the two railroad tracks. So they've either got to come in on Hampton, or they got to come in on Gregory, or they got to come in off of McLean. They've got to come through our neighborhood some way to get to their place, and it's like she just said, if they anticipate having more people than they have parking spaces for, where are they going to park? In front of my house? On the side of the street? If you've got a retention pond out there that has all this water?
Mr. Peever?
And somebody walks up?
You've reached your three-minute time limit.
And falls in it?
Thank you.
And they drown, who's responsible?
That is everyone that has signed up to make public comments, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, is there someone else?
Applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
The applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Come, you can come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nkemde Ohalite. I am the engineer on this application. The reason why I raise my hand is to clear some of the misconceptions coming from the petitioners against this project. First of all, let me take the, from the last speaker. We are not proposing a retention pond. We are proposing a detention pond. There is a physical difference between a detention and a retention. A retention holds water all the time, which is what we're seeing. A detention does not hold water all the time. Detention allows the water to flow into the pond to minimize the rate of flowing, which will ameliorate flooding. At the end of the rainfall, that water will gradually dissipate into the drainage system, and the pond will be dried after that 24/7. That's the difference. As far as the light, lightning is concerned, we are going to provide a photometric lighting system, and on this project, we are not providing any lighting that will be focused towards the neighborhood. It will be directed away from the neighborhood, so there will be no impact from our lighting that will affect the neighborhood. In terms of their smelling, we are going to build a dumpster, enclosed dumpster. The smelling there may come from their side, it's not going to be anything more than what the neighborhood has already from each resident with their trash can sitting outside. We are going to provide a traffic impact analysis to determine how much traffic that will be generated, which is what the city ordinance calls for. Our design is going to be in full compliance with the city provisions in the city building code and in the planning department. This project is not going to have any adverse impact on the neighborhood. It's not going to have any adverse impact on the drainage. Rather, this project is going to add added benefit for development. The gentleman talked about rodents and animals coming into his house. If this site is developed, it is going to reduce that impact or even possibly eliminate all that. So I came up here to explain the misconception that they have, so that this will help them understand that we are coming in to be a good neighbor, not to be an adverse neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, are, and you are?
I am the pastor.
Okay. Does he need to sign up, or how, what do we, or should he talk during the ordinance?
In the past, we have had folks sign up and, and speak that way.
Okay.
Okay. They told me I didn't need to sign.
With three minutes, Maria, how can we make a full, positive choice?
I mean, that's fine. I just need to know if he needs to sign up or not. I don't want to violate anyone.
I remember, I don't remember the applicant signing up, so I told them they didn't need to.
I moved to.
Okay, so they don't need to sign up?
In the past, we have asked applicants to sign up.
Okay, I don't remember.
I moved to.
Mayor, typically, Mayor, typically at the beginning of the presentation, before public comment, the applicant is allowed to do a presentation and to present, and typically they're applicant is allowed to do a presentation and to present, and typically there hadn't, hasn't been a limit related to that on the front end. In this case, they're presenting after that, so I would suggest that they sign up, since it's sort of out of sequence with what the norm is, and allow them to have at least three minutes if they sign up for it.
You can, you can come on up. Thomas, you're getting him a form. If you can just- And, and, and the other question you do is, can they talk during the ordinance part? If they wanna give the presentation? I just wanna make sure legally, we not, we aren't violating anything.
So, in the past, I can at least think of one instance where we, if, if you all have questions for them-
Okay.
Then they're allowed to kind of, the applicant's allowed to respond.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah, okay, okay. So, do you wanna talk now, you wanna talk during the ordinance, our approval of the ordinance, so you can answer questions? It's up to you. 'Cause this is just a public hearing, but you can come back up during the ordinance and answer questions from council.
Okay, ma'am, I'll come back.
Okay, and you can make your, your statement at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So we're, go ahead and close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Who made the motion in second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion.
And who made the second?
I'll make the second.
So, we're closing the public hearing. All those in favor? All opposed? We're closing the public hearing now. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance? I need a motion and a second.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance for discussion.
It's just for discussion purposes. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Oh, for discussion, I'll second.
Okay, and there's a second. You can come up now.
Should we start off with prayer?
Maybe we should. Thank you so much. My name is Pastor Jeremiah Somola. My address is 20811 Trenton Valley Lane, Katy, Texas, 77449. I am the pastor of the, the church that is about to be built on the land. I remember when we first acquired the land, one of the first thing that I did was to go into the neighborhood and to reach out to those who live nearby. I met a gentleman, who I don't think is here today, the first time he was here, and he, he opened out his arms to us, and he thanked us for taking over the property, and he told us how much they have been waiting for someone to come in and develop the, the place, and they were honored that it's going to be a worship place. I went around the neighborhood also, just to get to meet some of the residents, and they opened up their arms and they welcomed me very well, which I really appreciated. Now, now, after I spoke to him, he mentioned to me about a gentleman whose house was right close to us, who would like to take over the land so he can cut the property and things like that. So the gentleman came to us, I believe his wife is here today, he came to us and he asked us if we could hire him to cut the land, and I told him we are very open to doing that. So he, he told us everything about the land and, you know, they, he opened up his arms to us. One of the things we've done as a ministry is, during the hurricane, we have helped to build and restore 65 homes. I was told even it was more than that number. We have some children, some of the youths, we've, who, who have had problems growing up, that we've helped in our youth department, and we have seen change in their lives. We've gone to the prisons and we've been able to minister to those in prison. When they had the earthquake in Nepal, we left our place here to go to Nepal and help the city, where we have orphanage in Nepal. And when we got there, we were able to help to rebuild some of the homes that are there. The reason I bring this up is, everywhere we have gone, it's always been to bring a blessing to those that are around us. And initially, when we brought in the plan, one of the things they told us, I believe I met with the, with the city manager the last time we were supposed to be here and we were taken off the agenda, we met with him and he was so kind to us, and one of the things we've said is, whatever it is that needs to be done to make sure we're in compliance of the building, we will. A gentleman spoke to us initially, and he said about the light coming into his house, and God so happy, I was there with the engineer, and the engineer explained to him that the lights are not going to go into his backyard, and explained to him how we are going to phase the light up into the neighborhood and into the, the church area and things like that. And he was very open to us. I lost my dad at the age of nine, he collapsed and died in my hands. And at that time, one of the things that really blessed me was the help that the church around us came and provided to us. That helped to change and shape my life into the young man that I am today. And just like he said, I just want to make sure I, I reach out to everyone here, that we intend to be a blessing and not a burden in any way, and we intend, mayor, to comply with everything that the city is asking, that we should comply with. So I just wanted to introduce myself to you guys and to also introduce myself to some of the, the residents who had not had time to meet with me. The last time we were here, I met some of them after the, after we had the meeting, they spoke to me and we prayed together, and I just wanted to bring that on the table and say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the church.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do. Is it Pastor Jeremiah?
Pastor Jeremiah, yes, sir.
I have a question. You mentioned, I think, a couple of people that you said, when you purchased or acquired the property-
Yes.
-that they welcomed you with open arms.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain why any of those folks haven't come before us today to-
They were here the first day when we had it, they came up, and I, and I think we also had them, one of them signed up to say that they are for us. And the gentleman who was asking us to, if we could help to hire him to cut the land, after I spoke to him, I told him that right now we do have somebody who is doing that, but we do intend to bring him in so he can help us. And, I mean, he spoke very highly. I'm not sure if his wife, I'm not too real good with the faces, I'm not sure if his wife is here today, but I know he's not here, he's a tall gentleman.
Yeah, I would, I would just think that something so important that you're trying to do, that, that you'd make sure that they were here. The other question I have is, prior to acquiring the property, did you think about actually walking the community or talking to the people in the community to try to get buy-in to see if, prior to purchasing the property, that this was something that would be welcomed in the community?
Before we did a purchasing of the property, we did come to the city here to, to speak to, I think it was Ajima who we met, and after we talked to her and we explained to them what we wanted to do, because we understand that the land needs to be rezoned, and we showed them what we were about to do. They gave us a positive answer, and they said that we should go ahead and apply for it and present it, that once they look at it, and if everything is okay, then they are going to present it to the council, and if the council approves it, then we should go from there to meet with the final authority. And the first time we met with them, they asked us a few questions, which we did answer all the questions that they had. And then, we went ahead for the first one, which we had also, we, we did receive a positive answer, and we are here today. Actually, we were supposed to be here, I think, last month, but we had, they had a mix-up and removed us from the agenda. So they did reschedule us to be here for September the 3rd.
Pastor, I have a comment. As my cohort said, you've mentioned that there were a few people that you met. We got 176 names that are not necessarily on board with this. Would you feel obligated to maybe sit down and have a conversation and meet with them? Because that's a lot of people that, in comparison to the few that you said opened their arms, I mean no disrespect, I'm a God-fearing man, but that's 176 that I think you need to have some conversations with.
And, and thank you for your question. We did, when we were done the first time, you know, I met with some of them that I spoke with. A few of them were very angry, we offered the engineer, if you might wanna come up, he asked if we can have an homeowner associate, I think it was you that was proposing that, if we could meet with them, and one of them made a comment that wasn't too good, that they don't wanna, wanna see us there, if not, we wouldn't like what we see. So he was coming out a little violent, and I didn't want to-
They don't wanna see you there?
There was a gentleman who we were talking to outside, and he proposed, I think, the gentleman over there proposed, if we can all come together and meet. The other guy told me that he really wants it, but this other guy is the one that's kind of instigating that he shouldn't hold, and he, he, he didn't receive us too well. So we didn't want to, he, he told us that, that he doesn't wanna see.
Well, have you attempted to attend an HOA meeting?
Yes, sir, we did propose to attend the HOA, and they told us, we did attend, we did attempt to attend, and that was when we were told here, that there would be no, no need for it. I think you were standing there when we had that discussion.
Well, Pastor, go ahead, go ahead.
Pastor, what is the plan when church is out, for your parishioners to exit the church? Do you anticipate them going through the neighborhood, or do you anticipate employing-
No, they are not going through the, through neighborhood, and that was the question that was asked us the first time we came, and the engineer has all the plans to answer that.
Well, that, that is why we are going to perform a TIA, which is traffic impact analysis. The intention of that is to determine how the traffic is going to impact the neighborhood, and how we can channel that traffic away to ameliorate the traffic. Until we do that, our intention is not to channel the traffic towards the neighborhood, but away from the neighborhood, sir.
And do you know the, what the current conditions are? In other words, do you know what the current traffic count is or current flow is? You know your baseline that you're working with? 'Cause all, 'cause even now it seems a little bit rough. So a TIA could send it-
At that intersection, we don't have it available yet, but we tend to require, you know, request for that if it's available. In addition, we're also going to do our own TIA, so that we can provide the city the information, and the city will make a determination as to how much traffic, how many driveways, and how we can channel the traffic from the neighborhood.
Okay, and then one more question. I'm not sure if this is Thomas or you, but this print's very hard to read, there's a two-year runoff and a ten, 100-year runoff.
Correct.
Is that drainage? What is this? I can't, it's so small.
It's drainage analysis. That's the drainage analysis, and that's to determine how much water that is going to, how much runoff that we're going to create from that side, and how we can deter that much so that it doesn't impact the drainage condition.
Yeah, it's just real hard to read. So I appreciate you guys doing this on the front end of the project, so people have the-
Exactly.
-transparency, but maybe make this a little bit-
And what that analysis determine is that, based on our proposed design, that we are not going to increase the 100-year and 200-year runoff as it is today. In other words, what we are going to deter is the difference, what we created. We're gonna hold it in that point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then we're gonna discharge it slowly, so that the flow will not be adversely impacted.
No, I appreciate this, but I can't read it.
And if I may, just to remind everybody that that analysis is done during the plating phase. The city and the city engineer have standards and benchmarks that folks have to meet in order to meet the city's drainage requirements.
And, and, and let me add to that, she's correct, but also, what we did, what we took more conservative approach, which will either meet or supersede the city's requirement.
Okay, thank you.
My question, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Can I cut you off? I know a concern for the residents was the tra, I'm sorry, the parking, and will it flood into the residence home and parking in front of their houses and stuff. How do you plan to address that?
Oh, we have, we have a plan to address the parking analysis. Now, once the city approves our request, then we'll go into design phase. Whatever capacity we are going to design, we determine the number of parking, and we have enough space either to build horizontally or we'll build vertically. And what I mean by vertically is to build a parking garage, which will minimize the land usage, the amount of imperviousness, which will also help us reduce our detention pond. So either way, we are going to do due diligence to make sure that this project does not in any way adversely impact the existing condition of the drainage and traffic in the area.
If, if I may add, and, and I gotta stress this, and once again, I mean no disrespect, and, and I appreciate all the engineering aspect of it, but the fact of the matter is, you got a number of folk that are not, at this point, interested in it. I think that it would be in good conscience on your part to make an effort to sit down and have a conversation with them. I, 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 I really have to say that. We can look at all the engineering and all of that, but you have 176 individuals that are saying they're not in agreement with that at this moment. You can't just ignore that.
Thomas, how many people in the buffer sent in the protest letter?
We had nine against, and one in support.
Okay, and how many people were notified? In that buffer?
Mayor, if I may, planning did provide me with an analysis for the-
I, I just want him to-
Okay.
I know, I know.
Okay.
It was roughly 60, 60-plus in there.
Okay, 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 okay. Go, go ahead.
And to, to address your, your comment, it's a very valid comment, and I agree, and like the pastor was saying, which is the reason why I came back here. At the last meeting, after the meeting, the planning meeting, we met outside with some of the residents that stayed behind, and we agreed to talk to them. In fact, I gave them my business card, so that when they're ready to contact us, because the lady that I spoke with outside suggested that some of their residents were out of town, and when they come back, it's okay, here's my business card, when they come back, you guys get together, send me an email, give me a call, I'll be glad to come and talk to them. Never got anything back.
Excuse me, where's Jennifer? Jennifer, I have a question, 'cause I don't see it here, and he mentioned something I think that was pretty critical. He's, when Councilmember Edwards asked him about parking and addressing the parking, 296, I think, current spaces, and 500 maximum for this first phase, and in the next five years, another thousand, so we're talking about 1,500 people, and only 296 spaces. I don't see a parking garage or structure for that on the site plan here? So, has that been proposed?
They're not showing it, and I will, I will say, parking is gonna be a detail that's gonna have to be considered with the design of the building itself. So there's still some moving parts in terms of what that final parking count will actually be. So when you look at parking, it's gonna be done, they'll have to design a building, the building will have to go through building code, fire code, review, what that occupancy is determined based on fixed seating or movable seating, the size of that actual worship space is gonna dictate the minimum parking that's gonna be required. And then, in terms of permitting, they're not gonna be able to construct unless there's made adequate consideration for parking on-site. So there's still some moving details. This plan does not show a parking garage. We haven't discussed the parking garage with this type of development, but there's still some moving pieces, and so that can, that can, that can be reduced, and the building size can be reduced based on what they can actually fit on this space. And then, and then keep in mind though, too, with parking comes other requirements as well. So in addition to drainage detention, you also have your landscaping requirements. So for every parking space you add, you have to add, you know, green space and landscaping, so that also is-
Well, that's why I asked you to come up, because, I mean, that's a major caveat in this whole discussion. Parking in itself is important, but now you're talking about a potential parking garage that's not even listed here, and there's a lot more that goes into it than just saying, I'm gonna build a parking garage.
Mr. Burin, if I may add, parking is not equated to the number of occupant in the building. It's a proportion of that. If you go to the building code, I believe, depending on the type of use, for every 1,000, you need to provide a certain number of parking spaces. So the number of parking spaces we have here is based on the 500. That's what the code requires.
No, I understand that, but, but we're talking about in the next five years, 1,500.
Exactly.
So that's not being addressed in this current site plan.
Exactly, the ultimate. But this site plan is a schematic to get us approved for the request for the change of use. Once that is done, the city ordinance, the building code, is going to determine what and what we're gonna put there, and whatever- code, is going to determine what and what we're going to put there. And whatever the city requires us, we are standing here affirming that we are going to meet the city requirement. Landscaping requirement, drainage requirement, parking requirement, social requirement, we will provide that. We will meet. We cannot build unless the city approves and gives us permit to build. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other...
I have one more. Do you anticipate the detention, do you anticipate the detention pond being relocated from where you're...
Actually, there are two options.
Okay.
This is surface detention plan. We can also do more, more economical way, underground detention, which will hide everything outside, and it will be a do-or-use. We use the underground for detention, and above that would be our parking surface. So yes, we have options.
So, so that's exactly what I believe Councilmember Pearson's saying.
Yes.
When you start sharing those ideas, you start to let go some of the fear of having a pond with mosquitoes and all that stuff. So you have to have a little bit more dialogue with your neighbors, if you're going to be a neighbor. So, thanks for sharing that.
Are you willing to have some type of dialogue with them, like a meeting?
Absolutely. If they are open to it, like I said, we did offer to...
I need your card.
Like I said, we did, we did offer and extend a hand of a meeting with them, and I will absolutely be open to that. No problem.
I'm kind of going to go out on a stretch, which would we be willing to kind of facilitate, like a workshop, maybe a open forum for the residents, as well as the engineer and our pastor, as what we did?
Well, at this point, you guys have to decide if you want us to vote tonight. Do you want to go talk to the community and come back, or do you want us to vote on the information that we have? It's, it's up to, it's up to you. I mean...
This is a first of two readings?
Yeah, but, I mean...
If it fails.
Yeah, if it fails, then, you know, I don't know what anyone's going to vote. But if you're wanting to go talk to the community and come back, you can pull it. It's, it's up to you.
Again, Mayor, like I said, I'm very open. The first time we, we are even talking about acquiring the property, I did make an effort to go in there, and I met with some of the residents. And before we also acquired, I met, we came and we met with Ajima also, and we, we spoke to her.
And I guess the concern is that some of the council members brought up, there's a list of what, 137?
Seventy-six.
Hundred. Yeah, seventy-six.
One-seventy-six.
One-seventy-six. One-seventy-six who are against it. We have an audience of people against it, and none of the people that are for it have come. So it's, it's up to you.
I'm very open, Your Honor. I would, I would love to meet with them. And it is my desire to, to meet with each. If we have to meet in, in HOA, that's fine. If they, if they want to invite us to a neutral place, that's fine. Like I said, I did make the, the offer to, to a gentleman. I can't remember his face, one of the gentlemen, and he told us, "I don't want to see you," and he caused your face around me at all, you know. So I'm very open. I would welcome to meet with them. Absolutely, I'm very open with that.
So are they able to pull the application and come back, E Joyce?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you want to pull it and come back, after you talk to the residents, or do you want to go ahead and move forward tonight?
Yeah, if, like I said, if we can get an agreement that we can meet with them.
Well, we can't make that agreement for you. I mean, you have to go and meet with...
Who's the HOA president?
HOA. I think Sheryl Orloff, are you the president?
No, I'm treasurer. I have three other board members.
Yeah, she can speak for them.
At this point, no, we do not want to.
Okay, okay.
We have a petition.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So you want to move forward tonight?
We, we opted to meet with them, but they declined it. So this is the second or third time they had the plan.
Okay.
So we've done the due diligence to meet with them, and at least explain to them what we're doing. Instead of looking at the concept we have, we'll tell them exactly what is in the plan and what we plan on doing. So...
Okay, okay, okay. Are there any other questions?
I'd just like to ask the HOA one more time, if I may.
Can I speak with them?
Yes, yes.
Can, can we...
Could you ask her what's her...
Can, can I go and speak with her?
Authorize it.
Now, right now? Can I have...
I don't have a problem to ask the legal.
Can, can I?
If you would like to, I mean, the body can have a recess for five minutes.
For five minutes.
Okay. We can, is there a motion to recess?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We'll recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
We're going to reconvene at 8:12. If I can get the applicant to come back up.
You going to go?
And we are going to reconvene on Agenda Item 7A2. And Councilmember Pearson?
Pastor, I have spoken with the HOA, and they have agreed to meet. And so we'll work out the details, so...
So the question is, do you want to pull the application, so you guys can meet, or do you want us to go ahead and vote? It's up to you. You want to pull it?
Yes, let's meet with them. Yes.
And it'll come back to the next meeting?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. So they're going to, E Joyce, do we need to make a motion for them to pull, or they can just pull it and...
They're the applicants. If they would like to withdraw it, they can do that.
And then they can bring it back to the next meeting, or whenever they're, they're ready for it to come back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Well, you can go ahead and pull it.
Mayor, based on the circumstances, we make a motion to withdraw and meet with the neighborhood and come back.
Yes, yes, that's, yes, that's fine. That's fine.
Have a second.
Thank you.
Bless you.
All righty, we will move on to Agenda Item 7B1.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, providing an interim procedure regarding the administration of plans and plating rules, adopting a plating manual, providing for repeal, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Good evening. So the council is aware of the last changes that came out of the legislative session. And so this is an ordinance, because those bills became effective on September 1st, and staff is still working with amendments, proposed amendments to our land development ordinances that include the subdivision ordinance, and that will come before you at a later date. But since we are now in the month of September, this bill is before you, so that we can start to implement interim procedures, so that all of our land application, land development applications are done and performed in accordance with that bill. So the cover memo summarizes what the changes, or what this interim ordinance would do. Would you like me to go through that somewhere?
If you can briefly.
I was trying to. In essence, what the proposed ordinance before you does, is it would adopt the city's plating manual, which we already operate under. So none of those regulations are new regulations, it's existing regulations, but this ordinance would adopt that manual. It would also establish a filing date for applications, so that we can start the clock. As you know, and I apologize, let me go back, this is related to House Bill 3167, the land development applications bill. And so this would start, create a filing date for this interim process. And the interim process, the timeframe is fourth month of September, for applications received during this month. This bill, or this interim ordinance, would define what applications are subject to this shot clock. And so we have a definition that corresponds with the legislative changes. So in terms of plaques, plaques will continue as our typical, that go before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that includes concept plans, preliminary plaques, final plaques, replaques, any kind of plat that goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission would be subject to these requirements. And it expands to include plans. And plans include construction plans, so those are subdivision construction plans that are reviewed during the process of plating, and construction that takes place as a result for infrastructure development, streets, roadways, utilities, and the like. This also includes private improvements as well. And so the definition for plans corresponds to the city's work classes for building permits that are applicable to land development, not vertical construction, not actual buildings and structures, permits for vertical construction, but any kind of permit that affects the movement of land, the improvements on the land. So that includes civil plans, it includes ground-up constructions that include civil plans, grading plans, detention, retention plans, any kind of flatwork plans, and the like. What this bill would do is establish that if an application for any of those plans or plaques are received on any date other than the dates that are specified in the ordinance, that we would consider that to be a disapproval, and that application would be disapproved. And then it also establishes that an applicant can extend the 30-day clock. And so in essence, what this is doing is having the city make a determination, either as required by the Planning and Zoning Commission, or plans that are approved at an administrative level, that all of that is done within the 30-day period that's established by this bill. And that is hopefully a summary.
That's good.
And if you all have any questions, just let us know.
Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Second.
And we have a motion by Councilmember Marulis, and a second by Councilmember Boni. All those in favor to open the public hearing? All opposed? Motion passes. We did not have anyone who signed up. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to close the public hearing? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? There are no questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda Item 7B2.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, electing to participate in tax abatement, reauthorizing guidelines and criteria governing city tax abatement agreements, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, Joe. Good evening. As council may be familiar, any community which wants to offer tax abatement must adopt the guidelines for that purpose every two years. We last adopted our guidelines about two years ago. Since that time, the legislature has added an additional requirement to hold a public hearing. Before you this evening is a opportunity for a public hearing and a resolution that readopts the existing guidelines. The guidelines, we saw no need to change them, as it's in the process of working with our current economic development plan, and so we didn't recommend any consideration for making any changes. With that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? We did not have anyone who signed up. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make the motion to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to close the public hearing? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to adopt the resolution as written.
Is there a second? Any questions for Joe? There are no questions? All those in favor of approving the resolution? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Non-A authorizations, consider authorizing a proposal on a maximum property tax rate, and consider setting the dates for public hearings and the, and the adoption of such proposal on a future meeting agenda. Elena, come on up.
Okay, so I do not have a presentation for this item, since I presented at the special, but I am here for any questions that you may have in regards to setting the rate. The recommended rate that's in the proposed budget document is 63 cents, and that is made up of the maintenance and operations rate of .46639, and the interest in sinking, which is the debt service rate of .16361. And that's per $100 of assessed valuation.
Is there a motion authorizing a public hearing on September 16th, 2019, and a second hearing on September 23rd, 2019, and the placement of a proposed tax rate of no greater than .663 cents on the October 7th, 2019, regular meeting agenda at 7:00 PM at City Hall?
I move that we approve what the mayor stated.
Now, I'll second that.
Let me have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I've, I've been hearing quite a bit of rumbling. I just want to know, because this is a part of the budget process, and it's part of the budget, this is a part of it, about a shortfall of about a million dollars. That means a lot of discussion. Can you speak to that at all?
There, there is no shortfall in the fiscal year 2020 budget. We are actually, in the general fund, we are proposing to add $500,000 to our fund balance, meaning that there is a surplus of $500,000. In any other fund, if the expenditures exceed the revenue, it does not exceed the total resources, which includes beginning fund balance, which was discussed before. So there's, there isn't a shortfall.
Thank you.
I think that was all gossip, number one.
It's, it's been rumbling out there, yeah.
So somebody, you know...
I just like to clear...
Passed it on incorrectly. Let's start there. But yeah, it was incorrectly passed on.
Made its way on social media.
Yeah, it was all, it's all out in the community. And so I feel like it's important, as we're talking about something, it's important at our, as our tax rate and as our budget, we just need to make sure that the residents know exactly what's going on and be as transparent as possible. And so because it's chatter out there about it, I, you know, and this is something that is a public forum, we need to address those things as best we can.
Councilmember Boni, I would just say, I think this team did an outstanding job in the development of this budget. Not only were we able to come in at, below the rollback significantly than what we've done previously, but we also were able to identify $500,000 to go towards our, to stabilize and to, to give towards our fund balance. And I think that's great, going into 3.5% property cap, because what we've been hearing from some of the rating agency is a level of concern of the unknown, particularly with some of the smaller cities, on what impact this will have on cities throughout the state. So one of the things we're trying to do, particularly with some of the commitments that have been made with Fire Station 6, and some other policy commitments, is to make sure that we buffer as best we can the fund balance and have stability. And I think that's what they're looking for, particularly with cities like Missouri City, which has some overlapping debt, you know, as you know, with municipal utility district, et cetera, to continue to make sure we have a solid fund balance. And that's one of the reasons that we want to do that with the budget that we have before you this year.
Doesn't that bring our fund balance percentage up to 27%?
That's, that's the estimate right now, about 27%.
Well, considering the 3.5, and just some of the other things that I know we have impending to come in at 63 cents, again, I think is just phenomenal. So thank you all the staff for working hard on this budget and putting this before us.
Any other questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to do a record vote, E Joyce?
Yes, ma'am.
So we can start with Mayor Protem. Yea or nay?
Yea.
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 9B, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services contract for citywide payment and sidewalk evaluation.
Evening again, Mayor and Council. As presented earlier during the special meeting, in regards to the, our pavement maintenance and management program, and the associated sidewalk and pavement evaluation services, we are asking for authorization to contract with Frugro for those services.
Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract for citywide payment and sidewalk evaluation?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions for Cliff? There are no questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 9C, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for participation in the off-system bridge replacement program.
Mayor and Council, just to give you a brief synopsis, Texas...
Mayor and Council, just to give you a brief synopsis, Techstart has a program called the Off-System Bridge Replacement Program. They go ahead and inspect bridges citywide and see if they meet their criteria, whether they are structurally deficient or they're structurally acceptable. One of the bridges they inspected was the Wixburgs Main Bridge leading to the community, and this was done in 2017. The bridge was rated at a rating of 51.8. 50 is the fail criteria. It was slightly above, but they, Techstart sent us a letter saying that they want to put this bridge in the replacement program. Again, it was inspected in 2017. They want to start the process for design. Hopefully, around the time of construction, they will reevaluate and see if it has fallen below the 50 criteria. If so, they would go ahead and replace it. Now, Techstart requires a 10% match or a local city commitment, which would equate to about $145,000. At this point, they're asking for cities' match or commitment, and by us, by you authorizing us to send a letter to Techstart, we're saying that we would like for this bridge to be considered for replacement. And again, the construction cost you're looking at is about 1.45 million, and we would be leveraging 10% of our costs to replace this bridge potentially. Again, that determination is firmly going to be made somewhere in around 2020, but we do have the funding in our bridge replacement program. At this time, we would send a letter saying that we're interested if the council were to so authorize. I don't think any funding commitment is needed at this point. And once they design it and they found that it is deficient, at that point, the city will have to make the funding commitment.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to authorize the city engineer to respond to Techstart as part of this Techstart's off-system bridge replacement program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Question, what makes this bridge eligible and the Fawn Metal Bridge wasn't eligible?
This is, serves the transportation needs, and that's why Techstart does the inspection of that. From my understanding, the Fawn Metal Bridge is a pedestrian bridge.
It was a pedestrian bridge, uh huh, yeah, okay.
Question, are there two spans on this or just one across the?
There are two spans. It's a boulevard section, so there are two spans.
Looks like there's two spans.
Yes, sir.
So what we're talking about is replacement of both of those spans across that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
10A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 2 Administration of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations regarding tagging final action on agenda items, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Mayor and Council, as you recall, I think Martin is still here, but as part of the Gallagher study last year, we did compensation and benefits.
No, we're on 10A. 10A. The tagging.
Tagging.
Who's presenting it?
James is out of town. This item was made at the request of Councilmember Emery to update the city's procedure for tagging items. It was considered on first reading at the last meeting and was approved for the three. It provides for council members to provide an explanation upon tagging, as well as providing limitations for tagging certain items in certain situations.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Which one? Councilmember Rulis or Councilmember Pearson?
A second.
I have Councilmember Pearson with a second. Any discussion? I have a comment. So basically, Councilmember Emery, you were saying that you felt this was necessary for transparency?
Yes.
So with that being said, I'm sure this council wouldn't have a problem with filming our special meetings for transparency at this point.
I would, I would.
I would love it.
Forwardedly agree with that.
Okay.
If we have the funds, I thought that one reason we couldn't do it was because they didn't have the facility set up to be able to do the special meetings.
There's a number of reasons, Councilmember, but I wholeheartedly embrace filming the special session.
I don't know why we don't do it in the first place, to be honest with you.
Kind of my thought.
Just like sitting, standing in the back, I move that we, you know, come out here for special sessions after it was discussed, so I have no problem with it. Anything that we can do to make everything more transparent, I'm down with it.
That's transparency, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
We also need some consistency with the recordings of our committee meetings. I know currently, we have some meetings that are recorded, others that are not. It would be nice if we could add some consistency across the board. Councilmember, now we get into resources. From a standpoint of, I can understand public meetings as relates to council, but when you're talking about committee meetings, then you're getting into bandwidth and our ability to provide services that we have. So that needs to be a fruitful discussion, because then we can't, we already at this point are the lowest FTE in the entire state, and now we're now diverting additional resources for all meetings or other meetings, particularly not with the full council. So at this point, if we can have some discussion about that in the future.
What's the current protocol to determine which meetings will be recorded and which meetings won't?
Well, none of the committee has ever been, committee meetings have never, because it's not a quorum of council.
Recording?
A quorum.
Video recording or audio recording?
Audio.
Audio recording?
Right.
Not video, because their committee meetings are usually held in the back, but I mean audio. I'm going to defer that to the, to the city's attorney.
And I would ask you all to put it on a future agenda, because the item that's before you is actually about tagging. So that would be my recommendation, is that if you would like to discuss it further, you can put it on a future agenda.
All of those in, we have a motion and a second? I know Councilmember Emery did, and then Councilmember Pearson made the second. All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. 10B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending the personnel policy of the City of Missouri City, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Who's presenting?
Martin Rutherford, HR Department.
Good evening again. This is actually going into one of the initiatives that I talked about in my earlier presentation regarding the vocation accruals. As you know, we encompass several different areas when it comes to human resources. And this is regarding the Gallagher benefits survey or services survey that they had done, or compensation study that they done this past year. And kind of give you a little bit of background on this. They were to develop a compensation program that is internally equitable and externally competitive. The compensation levels reflective of applicable public sector labor markets for which the city competes for talent. Continued, all positions compared to other public sector organizations in Missouri City, Texas area of similar size and complexity. This study was engaged to perform a review of the benefits for the City of Missouri City and make recommendations regarding current state and of compensation and benefits, market competitiveness of specific employee benchmarks, current and proposed compensation structure, and competitor pay practices and benefit offerings. Major considerations of the city are to establish, create a new compensation structure that is market competitive. The survey had a questionnaire. It developed a survey questionnaire to collect data in a fashion that was standard and easy to quantify and analyze. The results included data from competitor, comparator organization and private sector survey data. Twenty-six organizations were asked to participate. Seventeen organizations responded, a 65% response rate. The survey results represent data from the following organization and published survey sources. The survey's methodology was followed up with each organization to encourage participation. GBS reviewed and entered the data collected from participants. They followed up directly with participants to clarify and validate missing or questionable information reported, and then of course, GBS followed the U.S. Department of Justice and Federal Trade Commission guidelines that state five job matches should exist per job in order to conduct statistical analysis or drawing conclusions. And then of course, GBS performed several reviews of the data to identify any extreme data and ensure validity and reliability of the data. What was the survey's findings? The survey found a significant misalignment with the market when it comes to our administration of average vacation days offered to our employees. Kind of give you a benefits executive summary average of vacation days. The market average is 17 days. The City of Missouri City was at current 13 days. The participating organizations, organizations and their average, City of Allen was 17.14, City of Baytown 15.71, City of Bel Air 17.43 on the average, City of College Station 17.14, City of Conroe 17.43, City of Deer Park 18, City of Houston 17.86, City of Katy 16.43, again, City of Lake Jackson 15.86, City of League City 20 on the average, City of Pearl Land 16.43, City of Rosenberg 13.57, City of Sugarland 15, City of Texas City 15.71, City of Webster 17. As you can see, based upon those averages, we were below even the lowest on that list. The staff recommendation, amend our personnel policy, Section 7.2 Vacation, to reflect the findings from the Gallagher Benefit Services Report. Any questions?
Yeah, question, when the Gallagher survey was done, did they just look at the vacation days or they looked at the whole package of benefits?
They looked at the whole package of benefits.
And this is the only one that they found?
No.
That was below the, the standards of the 17 cities or however many we have? Do we know that or?
No, there were two councilmember. This was one, and right offhand, I can't remember the second one, but ultimately, it didn't say we were way behind. It just said we were close. So based upon implementation, and one of the things that we had the meeting with the council, you had stated, there were several areas that we were leading the market, and then there were some that we, in this case, two, that we were not. From our standpoint, since we've been talking a lot about morale, based on feedback that I've had with management and as well as frontline staff, the one that we felt that we really needed to do, that would have the biggest bang for the buck, but more importantly, get us where we needed to be in the market, was the vacation accrual. And that's, that's the reason we're bringing it forth. And we'll continue, because Gallagher is coming back again to see whether or not we continue to lag in any other areas, we'll be engaging them over the course of the next year to be able to see whether or not we, where we are and what other recommendations we would need to make.
I guess the point I'm making is that if there's two benefits that, you know, we're below the standards, that shows that we've got a competitive benefit package overall with the other cities? I mean, can we make that assumption excluding these two items?
I think we can. I think when you look at our HSA, we are leading the market related to the numbers, not only for family but individual. When you look at some of the other offerings that we're providing, even social security, in this case, there are some cities don't provide that we do. So we look at it more as a totality, and I think that's one of the things that by increasing this, this makes us even more. And I know in my conversation with Dr. Williams before he left, when we're talking about enticing people to come to work for the city, one of the first thing they're looking at is vacation. What is your vacation accrual? And when you, when you say it's 13 and you're at the bottom of the, of the list, they're making those determination, why would I leave where I'm, where I am doing 17, 18 to go to somewhere where I'm accruing 13? So we believe this is competitive, it puts us where we need to be, and it has more of a bigger bang than any of the other ones. But in totality, we believe we're competitive now.
Anthony, do you see any, since we have the lowest FTEs, do you see this increase of AK impacting sort of our workflows? Or we're just all balancing out by?
I really believe it'll balance out. I think from my standpoint, one of the things we're encouraging when we're talking about wellness, and that's really why we've really stepped it up, and our employees can tell you that we're getting daily messaging on, on really balancing life, because we are encouraging people to take time to balance, because if they're not healthy and if they're not engaged, then ultimately, that reflects in how they engage our citizens. So in this case, we purposely did not increase the cap, because we, the discussion was from the consultant, we want them to take some time to balance family life with work life, and that's one of the things we've tried to achieve based on this adjustment.
Did we compare, I see the maximum accrual is 256 hours. Did we compare that with other cities also?
We did, Mayor, and the recommendation for Gallagher was not to move the max based on where it was. The recommendation in the study was to stay where we were, that we were in, at the market related to the cap that we had, and ultimately, they felt that the trend that cities are moving towards is not increasing it, but maintaining something that's fair and encouraging employees to use time versus not use time for quality of life.
And to the cities that we have here, what, which, are all of those capping at 256?
No, I think when we say capping, there's.
That their maximum amount is 256 also?
Yes.
All the cities listed.
Well, I'm going to say it 256. No, ma'am, some of them are different. You have some that are a little less than 240.
They vary.
So they vary. Not every city is 256, so they vary at different ones. So they came up with an average. Their recommendation was that based upon where we were, we were within market, and they did not recommend that there be an increase.
And that's fine. Can we get those numbers also?
Sure.
So we can see where we fall in there or whatever.
And I think the other thing too is from a, I hear council talking about financial, financial being conservative as relates to being financial. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the higher you increase your cap, and now that we are increasing the accrual, when individuals walk out the door, then you have a fiscal liability related to that as well.
Okay, okay. Is it, did we do a motion? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the 17 days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? We've already had it.
If I may, really quickly, you said 17 days. Do you mean the ordinance as proposed?
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest to the assignment and assumption of a tax abatement agreement from TDC Southwest CC Partners 1 LLC, formerly known as Ridge Southwest CC Partners 1 LLC, to TPP Southwest Commerce LLC.
Good evening. As you may be familiar, all of our tax abatement requirements, all of our tax abatement agreements require that before they may be assigned to a new owner, the council approves those. This development is located off of Cravens Road. It's about a 475,000 square foot building. It has a five-year tax abatement on the building only. The developer Ridge Development has a new owner for that property. It is Trammell Crowe, excuse me, Transwestern Investment Group and the Texas Municipal Retirement System, TMRS, is the two entities that are buying that for investment purposes. The assignment is to the company they have formed to own it. It does not change in any way the obligations under the tax abatement. It only changes the owner of that, that enterprise for, for the tax abatement purposes. So it's provided for your consideration and action, and we have done these frequently in the past when the new owners come together. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
It doesn't extend it or anything.
It modifies, it does not modify the tax abatement in any other way than to assign it to a new owner. So the terms of the tax abatement do not change. It just says Bob was the owner, now Randy's the owner, however you want to, or Suzie's the owner, however, and then that, that entity is a new corporation, and it is the investment of Texas Municipal Retirement System and Transwestern Investment Group. of Texas Municipal Retirement System and Transwestern Investment Group is the buying net.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
City Council announcement, Mayor Protem? Do you have any announcements?
Nothing, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards? Thank you. Councilmember Emery?
No.
Councilmember Boni?
Two things. I just want to give a shout out to our staff for a phenomenal MCTX symposium that took place after our last council meeting. It was well attended. A lot of people came out, and I was happy to be present for that. Another thing I'd like to do is give a shout out to one of our Missouri City residents, Jaren Small, who was recently at the National, 2019 National Battle of the Bands, honored along with Mayor Sylvester Turner, HISD Superintendent Dr. Granita Lathan, and Dr. Charles Dupree for his real reading with a rapper program. Last year alone, he impacted the lives of over 10,000 students in HISD, Fort Bend ISD, and Aldine ISD, and he's doing a phenomenal job through his Legends Do Live program, and I'm honored to, you know, have him as a resident of Missouri City and a proud graduate of High Tower High School.
Councilmember Rulis?
Just thank you to the staff, Finance Department especially, for all the work you guys put into the budget. Great work.
Councilmember Pearson?
Just a couple of things. One, I want to say thank you to the staff. You guys keep up the good work. Attended Thurgood Marshall State of the School on last Tuesday. Some very good information was shared, and some very positive things are happening there. And the symposium on Wednesday was outstanding. It was very informative, and I would have loved to have seen more people come out, but the ones that came out, they appreciated it quite a bit. And last thing, I was kind of busy on Thursday. I had three HOA meetings to attend, and I got to all three of those, so that's about it.
Well, we will adjourn if there's no opposition and reconvene into our special meeting.
Okay.